Eric, are you there?
Muted. Hi there.
Hi Karen, it's John.
Hi John, I can see you.
Hi Karen.
Have you hit, hi there, have you hit any coffee at our coffee store there, the North Star?
Yes, yeah, I've been in there twice, they're only open seven to 11.
Okay.
Quarter hours, but they're open.
Well, I know their dog grooming is open too, the bad dog grooming for the ARC. Hi Bob.
Hi Karen, hi John.
Hi Bob. Is Eric on tonight?
Uh, yeah, I'm right here, sorry. I, you know, normally my phone and my login like connect, but I guess here it has it shown as two separate people.
You're loud and clear.
Okay.
Eric, this is John, is the deadline still tomorrow for the new applications?
Not sure we're connected here.
Yeah, Karen, you're loud and clear.
Good.
Maybe Eric's off again. Is Ryan on?
I haven't seen Ryan yet. But there's Emily, Staycheck. We're getting a sub.
Is Amanda?
Ryan, we're crooked.
Hi Ryan.
Hi there, I really crooked.
You're sideways, you're sideways.
That looks like you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, great. I look forward to maybe seeing you guys next month, maybe huh, in person?
Maybe.
I don't know, I think we're gonna have some reservations about that at my household for a little while.
All these video in.
Yes, exactly.
You know, Eric, I wonder if, is it, has there been any discussion about the other boards and like the town board and of continued use with Zoom as another alternative for people to attend meetings?
I'm not sure how in-depth the discussions have gone. Doug and I have kind of bantered about it before. Like even at the point when we're allowed to have in-person meetings, it's probably gonna be the case that many people don't want to, to where it's still probably a good idea to have them held like this, at least for people who want to join that way.
Exactly. That's a good idea, Ryan, though, to think about that.
Yeah, like, you know, instead of, we've had ideas about, you know, I know the city uses Channel 10, you know, but it's another form of being able to, for the community to be able to access the, all the meetings, and if we already have the software and we have the fiber optic going into the town.
Yep.
Sounds, seems like a win-win situation for everybody, and we can record them, and it's, it seems like it's...
Not everybody has fiber optic, Ryan.
Not everybody has cable, Eric. I did go with fiber optic up to a man, you know.
Hi Chuck, congratulations.
As I got a computer and I have all dialed it up.
You have your office set up outdoors now?
Yes, yeah.
Won't look like a bad setup.
Yeah, that's sweet.
Hello, everyone.
Hey Chuck.
Chuck.
Hello.
Karen, Bob, Amanda, John Lance, Ryan, and we're waiting for Gary. Ryan, show us your setup there again. Say something so we can see you.
You're muted.
Oh, he's muted.
Eric likes to mute me.
That's right.
I did no such thing.
So this is your, that's your estate in the background, the forest that you've...
Oh, I thought you may want to see my office setup.
Yeah, well, no, here, yeah, I'm just looking around the back of your property. Give us a one-minute tour.
Well, alright, this is cool for the record, so everyone can see how to rob my house. There's the hot tub.
Oh.
There's the pasture, there's the new new pole barn that I'm working on, just took my meat chickens out to pasture yesterday.
Uh, yeah, do you get a permit for that?
No, it's agricultural.
Oh, okay. Nevermind, that looks nice, it looks nice.
A permit to take my meat chickens out to the pasture?
No, 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 your pole barn.
Uh, actually, I did go through the permitting process for that, even though I didn't need it.
That's right. Do as we, do as we do.
Do as we do, and then I did follow all the setbacks and everything, and it's still agricultural, even though I followed all the standards where I could permit it as residential.
Okay.
I may, I may go that route in the future, but...
So Samuel Casella gonna be there tonight?
I'm giving him a call right now to see if, I mean, he needs to join us, so...
Alright. Tell him his application's in jeopardy, better get in line.
Tell him we want to say hello, as a whole.
Howdy Gary, join, join us yet? I knew he's not, he's not gonna be at the next meeting, I thought he was gonna be at...
Me too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see Karen, you're not gonna be here. Amanda, you'll have to fill in for two people.
I will try my very best.
Double duty, we're two hats. Ah, Gary's with us, okay.
Hi Gary.
Alright, well, let's, if you could put up the flag for us, Eric, we will salute it.
Sorry about that, you didn't answer.
You put up the colors? Alright, alright, would everybody join me in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everyone to the June 9th meeting of the Town and Canadega Planning Board. Let me do the roll call, make sure the whole family's here. Karen Blazey?
Here.
Ryan Staycheck?
I am here.
Gary Humes?
Here.
Bob LaCourse?
I'm here.
And our alternate, but still active is Amanda Van Lakken.
Present.
Okay, we also have John Robitella, our recording secretary with us, as well as Lance Brayban from MRB Group, representing as our consulting engineers. Chris Natter will be joining us later, and at the controls Eric Cooper, our director of development. Looking at the people here on the call, most of you I think are familiar with our procedures now that we've gone virtual. As we get into an application, I will ask the applicant to make a presentation. He or she will do so along with any consultants or other people who are involved in the application. We'll then give the board members an opportunity to ask questions and get any clarifications, and then I will open it up, and then the applicant will respond, of course, and I'll open it up to anyone in the public who would like to comment on the application before us, and then we'll go back to the applicant for any final comments, and then we will deliberate as a board and take action. I would ask that when you speak, you provide your name and your address, if you're not known to be with us on a regular basis. And with that being said, let's move into the first application, which is a continued site plan review. Mark's Engineering, representing Larry, we're just owner of property at 4963 Waters Edge Drive, and Larry is seeking a single-stage site plan approval to tear down and rebuild with a new single-family dwelling. Okay, we went through this last, last meeting, and I think we asked the applicant to go back and do some additional work specifically as related to complying with our shoreline guidelines. And Brendan, I know you submitted a new plan and some rendering, so if you'd be so good to tell us what you came up with.
Yeah, thank you. So we've added some plantings across the front, the north side and the front. There's two new beds, yep, just north and south of the corner of the house there. And we've added the two deciduous trees to replace the existing trees which are coming down in the rear. Those are red maples, the stuff up front is mostly tall grasses, hostas and other perennials. The rendering is actually done really well, Job, New Energy did this, and you can go through the different trees and plantings we're gonna have. So, yep, there's, there's kind of the front of the house. The grasses, there's a really good view from the lake if you keep going, Eric.
Yeah, it's a good one.
There you go, that's really what it'll look like from the rig, that's that existing mature maple there that you'll see on the left. That's gonna remain, so that's what it's gonna look like from the lake, and you can see on the right, that's what it looks like now, so...
Brendan, would those shrubs and bushes be as shown day one, or is that based on maturity of the...
Yeah, they're probably maturity, they're three to four feet in height, originally they're gonna be two-gallon pots, so they're probably gonna be about a foot and a half to two feet in height, so. Fast growing, though, they're very fast growing.
Yeah, I know, I know you don't want to choke, choke, choke the plants out. Now, you covered up that retaining wall, it was very obvious, so did a nice job on that, both in the front and on, I guess, the southern side. The rendering certainly gave us a better view. Open it up to the board, any questions, concerns?
Hey Brendan, this is Bob LaCourse, I do want to say thanks for this rendering, because this is exactly what I was talking about the other day. I went out there and looked at it and can definitely tell where you're gonna place the house, that tree is gonna block most of the house from the lakeside, it appears anyways.
Yeah.
So I was, yeah, I like your new plan, it looks good to me.
Thank you.
What kind of shape's the tree in? I think you might have said last meeting, but I forget.
Uh, the one, it's actually really good shape.
Okay.
Very mature, it's healthy, so...
Okay. Yeah, I think I was confusing with another application where it was sort of on life support and they were trying to keep it going, so. Good, good. Ryan, I think you and I were the ones that were, well, I guess the whole board had asked Brendan to come back with a, something to show us how he's gonna comply with the shoreline guidelines, and I, I think in my interpretation, it certainly looks like you've done that, and I appreciate your having to take the two weeks to do it, and Ryan, I know you had a concern, are you, are you good with this plan?
I think it's really nice, yeah, I was pretty comfortable with it before, knowing that that tree was gonna lay there, and I think that these renderings are really top-notch quality, so thanks, you know, for putting that together with New Energy Works. And I just, the one question I have maybe for Lance Brayban is why on our, is the number nine, I think it is, in our packet, why was that highlighted about protecting the tree with the screen, silt screening?
Well, I believe the last meeting you had mentioned that you wanted to identify the existing tree in the front to be protected, I thought, and so I highlighted to make sure that I captured what you're looking for in that.
Okay.
That's, that was the only reason it was highlighted, because it was the only one that I added from our last meeting.
No.
I thought it was a direct, I thought it was a direct comment related to what you had asked for, Ryan.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ryan asked for it, we had the disturbance going right up to, close to the bottom of the tree, so we moved that off since.
Right, right.
Um, yeah, thanks Lance, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know why it was highlighted, it just seemed like I didn't know.
No, I only highlighted just for the purpose of your review, so that you guys could see that that was the added in addition and draw it to your attention, that was all. It will be unhighlighted when I finalize it.
Thanks, man.
Yep.
Lance, while we have you, I know you did a review letter, and Brendan responded to each item, and I think you sent an email out saying that you've reviewed those responses, and they seem to have met your, your wishes?
Correct, the plans that were revised, at the time when I generated the resolution, I didn't have a chance to review them yet, so that's why there's some condition that we might be to take off as we get through it, but ultimately I did, as of yesterday, issue a comment, or an email stating that all of our comments have been addressed.
Okay, good. Alright, well, anybody in the audience? Ty, I see you're out there, thank you for providing the rendering, as has been said, it was, it really gave us a good perspective as to what it's gonna look like, and I think you certainly complied with what you're looking for in terms of shoreline guidelines.
Great, I'm glad the renderings were helpful, they were helpful for us, so sometimes just going through the process is good for everybody, so thanks.
Alright, and, you know, those, those landscape provisions as shown are on the approved, on the plans to be considered, so that's the way they will have to be put in, so just make sure everybody's aware of that. Okay, if nobody else has anything else, if nobody from the audience wants to speak up, I will, we'll move on to some action on this particular application. We have a seeker type two, somebody want to make a motion to adopt it?
I'll make a motion to bundle if I can the type two action, and the, I can't see it on here. Thank you, and the site plan approval to bundle them together, this does not require any kind of review environmental, it's a type two.
Okay, I'll take a second and then we'll discuss it.
Second, Karen.
Lance, you said that maybe some of these conditions would not be warranted anymore?
Yes, I would, I would suggest, and I muted, no, I would suggest that comments, condition number three, regarding MRB's comments, I believe based on my email, we can strike that, and then I'm also suggesting condition number five, as the revised plans show the versions were added.
Okay.
So in total, there will be seven conditions.
Okay, I know some of the responses in your review letter were such that we will comply with the final submission of the plans, provide that information, so as long as that's clear to the applicant, which I'm sure it is, I guess there's no reason to have condition three, and you're also asking to strike condition five, and that being said, I have a motion and a second. Oh, the only other thing Lance, in the findings? Would you make some reference to us spending time on consideration of the shoreline guidelines at both this meeting and the last meeting?
Yes, I, I had added a note to my plans and I never edited, so I appreciate that, thank you Chuck, yeah, most certainly will do.
Okay, that being said, I have a motion and a second to approve with the seeker and the single-stage state plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? I hear none? Okay, thanks Brendan and Ty for coming back, and we enjoy having you at our meeting, that's why we invited you back.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, yep.
Alright, have a good evening.
You too.
Alrighty, we now move on to a public hearing for, that had been advertised in the Daily Messenger on May 29th, and it's for Samuel Casella, owner of property at 4047 and 000 Woolhouse Road. He's, and Sam's requesting a single-stage subdivision to subdivide his parent parcel into four lots, and it's in the AR2 zoning district, and with that being announced, I will open the hearing, and Sam, are you out there, or somebody representing Sam?
Sam is not here, I gave him a couple of calls and I shot him an email to tell him to join us. He was notified last week that he's on the agenda and all the login information and whatnot. Generally, and Chris can probably speak to this once he's here, but generally the board doesn't take action when nobody's here to represent it, although if you guys want to vote to approve it, I don't see why that would be an issue.
Why don't we postpone deliberation on, until later in the meeting and see if Sam joins us?
See if they'll get back to us.
We'll double back on this. Okay? Yeah, I agree, I don't think we should be deliberating without the applicant or someone representing him. So, we'll suspend that for the time being, and we'll move on to... I didn't really ask for any, any audience participation in terms of privilege of the floor. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Now's a good time to do that, since we have a pause. Okay, hearing none, we'll keep moving on. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the May 26th meeting as amended?
So moved, this is Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
With comment, John Robitella, you are amazing at what you do, and I just want to throw props out, man. It's really is remarkable, the professionalism that we got with John Robitella, we just want to give you props, man.
Second that.
Second that.
Hear, hear, hear!
I was, I was amazed the way he was able to follow that discussion about the roof contamination back and forth that went on, it it was almost, it was like it was transcribed by a court stenographer, so it was, a great job, John, as always.
Thank you, thank you.
So that being said, hopefully we can approve the minutes now. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, John, nice job. Alright, Eric, we have no referrals from town board I know of, we have, we're not being sought after any recommendations from the ZBA. Recommendations from the code enforcement officer. There was an issue out at Lakewood Meadows, I think some of the residents on the new street Vine, Woodvine, I don't know if you saw that email, were concerned about the close proximity of the detention basin in their backyard, and concerned about flooding, and I know Chris Jensen and Chris Jensen and somebody else from the staff went out and looked at it.
It was Christian and Jared Simpson, the town.
Ah, Jared, that's right, yep. So, here's, here's what we're talking about.
Alright, I'm trying to pull up the grading plan, it's just not, in my PDF, it's not called out which sheet it is. Let's try this one.
The long and short of it was that they found the basin to be in compliance. I went out and looked at it, and I mean, it's, you know, it's relatively close, but still, it's, I don't think it's to the point where the residents have to worry about coming into their basement.
What were they talking about?
Oh, you're talking about this pond right here, and as you can see, it's relatively close to these townhouses and their properties.
You want to scroll down, scroll down a little bit, not the other way. You want to scroll down, scroll down a little bit, not the other way.
And so, you know, it's just filled up. They're worried it's going to kind of overflow and out of their property. But Chris has said and it's fine, working as desired.
Is that, is that at a higher elevation than the rears of those properties?
No, it's lower.
Oh, then, okay.
Yeah, they really drop off in the back. It's probably a walkout. Yeah, Lance.
Yeah, though that pond, I mean, that pond originally that, what is the northern part of that pond was there well before Lakewood Meadows, the section was developed. It was there to help alleviate some of the, the water that came through that area while they're building some of the other sections. So it does get a number of water or it used to get a number, a much larger quantity. So since then, they've oversized it to handle this development. And I gotta believe that, that that pond is well oversized to handle development from this. That is, if it were to overflow, it's going to go out towards the road, go down the channel and then cross over into what is the ditch slash gully that goes all the way down to West Lake Road. That's where, that's what happened when they were building sections seven and it's right across the street from this one on St. James. Those other sections in the woods. What would happen is this would overflow, it'd go down the road in a ditch that was designed for this and then it would cross over into the gully.
Right next to my house.
Probably. It does. You're right.
On the inside of the gully. If that gully ever fills up, we're all in deep trouble.
Gorge.
Yeah. It would cross over right north of the east Ruston Street. Yep. Go down, and go down that, that gully all the way down.
Yep. Yeah, the only thing that would cause it to hold excess of water would be a blockage or something like that. I'm sure that's what Chris looked for. And there was no signs of any, any blockage in the pipe, the asphalt pipe.
Right. And they even, they even put in where before it crosses the street there, we put in a, a larger detention area in that corner too. It's almost like a wet, a wetland area before it crosses the road because they wanted to slow it down before, before it went to the gully. Back before that was oversized as the pond. So it's, it's almost got like two mechanisms before it crosses into the gully to hold it back as well.
Lance, does that make a right turn or it's really more than a right turn right there?
That's why, that's why we created a depression right there where Eric's showing us now. So it basically collects and that's much lower than those homes there as well. It collects and then it feeds across into the gully.
Obviously pipes under the road.
Correct.
And then outfalls and then.
Right.
Heads to the garies.
Right. And then, then water comes further, what is further east from there from behind the woods, it's a wet area.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to bring that to your attention since town board members had brought it to our attention and to staff's attention. So we're aware of it, but the good news is apparently there is no, no issue to be resolved. Okay, let's move on to, I guess we can take care of the credit releases. You want to put those resolutions up, Eric? Hey, Chris, we'll get to you next. I'm sorry. I'd rather than keep you waiting. Chris Nathler, I see you're on the line now.
That's okay. I'm here. It's always a pleasure to see you guys.
I know we're taking away your playtime.
Oh, this is grilling time. You're taking away grilling time right now.
Okay, grilling time. Oh my gosh, don't burn me. All right. Let's do these as a package. We've got two releases for erosion control sureties, one for the Cleary residents at 5497 Rochester Point Drive. And the other for the Campbells at 4681 North Van Teef Drive. Can I have a motion to release $3250 from the Cleary account and $3565 from the Campbell account?
I'll make that motion to release $3250 and then $3500 to the Campbell.
Okay. Not coming out, it's not coming out of your pocket, Bob. You're right. All right, second?
Second.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Okay, Gary. Okay, Bob's made a motion. Gary, it's second that we release these two surety releases. So all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, let's move to the Barrow extension. Eric, Chris, one of you want to give us some background as to why we're talking about it? It's not on the agenda. Oh, it is on the agenda. Excuse me. It's on the latest agenda.
Recently revised one earlier today.
Version number four. So yeah, if you could give us a background on what's happening at Lakeside.
So if you'll recall, Barrow had a subdivision approved 25 years ago. That he then came in last year to change. And instead of having several residential lots, he amended it into having one giant lot with one single family residence. We've been going back and forth with Mr. Barrow's attorney on the stormwater management. The homeowners association doesn't want to take it. The, the, the large lot homeowner will take it. We're going back and forth on some language issues. They've been on top of this. Their attorney has been in contact with myself and Eric. There is nothing in New York state law that prohibits a third extension. And in order to get this resolved, I would request that you grant the third extension. It's not specified in New York law, but there's nothing that prohibits it. And to my knowledge, no circumstances have changed. So if you refuse to grant the extension, he can reapply and be granted the same site plan or subdivision approval that he's been granted last year. It's really just saving time, energy and, you know, the 200 some odd dollar application fee. So I would recommend that a third, the third renewal be granted.
Chris, Chris, what is, where do you see the final resolution going? You said the, the large lot owner was willing to accept it, but it looks like, if I recall, that detention area was in the parcel B, which is not owned by that same lot owner or potentially. Would that be a third owner?
No, so as part of our MS4 program and as part of town code, somebody has to enter a stormwater maintenance, stormwater management maintenance agreement. And that would be entered into by the, the large lot owner. It doesn't matter who owns the property.
Oh, okay.
As much as who agrees to maintain it. For the next 20 years, there's going to be about, and Lance, correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be about zero maintenance. But in 20 years, there's going to be some maintenance and the town doesn't want to have the responsibility for that. And up, up until we start, we entered into the MS4, the town took them. The town took these and said, we'll maintain them.
Yeah.
But now we're not doing that.
Yeah.
So that's where the confusion is. And, and I'll be honest, it's just confusion that's, that's led to this delay. I think we will get it resolved in the next couple of weeks, but they've got a, they've got a deadline.
Okay, thank you. I'm okay, I'm okay to, to grant a third extension.
The MS4 didn't preclude the town taking over basins. Did it just, it required that somebody be accountable for the maintenance of it through the sign either HOA or private property owner or some public entity.
It did not preclude the town taking over basins, but right about the exact same time, the town said, can we stop maintaining these, please? It's costing us a lot of money.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
The alternative being creating a drainage district for these.
Right.
Six lots and really, really screwing these six lot owners.
So, okay, so when we were delivering on this, and I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the minutes, but I'm sure we discussed who would maintain parcel B. And what was, what was our thoughts at that time? Was it that it would be the HOA, I believe. I think it was the HOA because we said. Or, or the lot, the, the big lot was going to create its own HOA and that the big lot owner would then maintain it.
And that, Chuck, and that's what we're trying to effectuate here.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, originally, if you guys recall, this was going to be a much larger subdivision with many more lots. And so that HOA was going to have a number of, a number of people still into it to enter into, to help facilitate that cost. And so the intention was to, yeah, keep it privately owned and maintained. However, since then, what was going to be 30 more lots has now dwindled down to five or six.
And so when, when the attorney approached those five or six, five lots saying, hey, we all need you to sign this to agree to pony up this money. Those five lots said, are you out of your mind? We thought we were going to have 30 lots.
Yeah, I thought we were going to share 30 ways, not seven ways, whatever. Yeah.
Exactly, Chuck.
Okay. All right. All right, well, can we so word the resolution such that if we approve it, the extension, that we're not creating a precedent here?
Yes.
And that this is being done as a result of deliberations between the town and the applicant and through no specific fault of the applicant. In other words, I think what we do with the, the two extensions is to try to prevent the, an applicant just dragging his or her feet. And, you know, it's either do your business to get off the pot. And in this case, it's, there is ongoing deliberations apparently and hopefully that would be resolved. I think in the last resolution, we said, we gave fair notice that this was going to be our final extension, the second extension. So if we could be so bold as to maybe include that in this extension, you think things will get done by September, Chris?
Absolutely. And I think Lance's second whereas paragraph covers what you just said, that this applicant is working to address the conditions of approval. And that is a determination that, you know, I can attest to because they've been working with me.
Do you want me to add in, do you want me to add into their working with the town on the conditions of approval?
No, that, I think it's fine the way it is, but maybe under now therefore be it resolved, the final subdivision plans titled, just hereby approved for the third 90 day extension. And then make another paragraph that says, this is the final extension.
And how about the precedent setting?
This is the final extension. No further extensions will be granted. Chuck, I'm not concerned about precedent setting because it's fact specific. In terms of, I mean, if it got to be a precedent issue, I would create an affidavit saying, you know, on March 3rd, I was contacted by Derek Spaderico to discuss this. On March 7th, I was, you know, there's 25 phone calls and emails I can refer to that say, they're, they're busting their tails to get this resolved.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I just, I know we live in a world here where subdivisions, land developments get extended out for years and years and years. I don't think, you know, necessarily that's the case here. It's not the same situation. But still, I think limits are good and we should, and once we establish them, they should be followed in. But in this case, being the extenuating circumstances that you enumerated, I'd be glad to move on. So if, if someone is, everybody's comfortable, we'll take a resolution to extend Lakeside.
Chuck, just, just a wording might help you and keep it there in that, in that second whereas where it says the applicant is still working to address. Dot, dot, dot. Would, would it be more to your liking if we said whereas the applicant has been diligently working to address the condition? Does that?
Oh, that's fine. Still working diligent. That's, you know, either one, they're both, they're both the same. That's, that's, that's fine. I appreciate your trying to, trying to help me out, but that's.
Well, I was just going to say, I was just going to say, maybe end that paragraph, say the applicant is still working to address the, the conditions of approval. And based on extenuating circumstances. You just said the word extenuating circumstances, Chuck, and I think that's what this is.
Okay. Very good. You got that? You got it Lance?
I, I do.
Okay.
With that change, I'll make a motion to approve 30, a third 90 day extension for Lakeside Estates, section the three.
Correct.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. You also, Lance, I had that paragraph regarding the final, this is the final granting.
Yeah, I added, I, what I did is I made them number one and then the second note, because it says for the following reasons. So following reason one will be as written. Following reason two will have that note that this is the final extension and no other extensions will be approved by the planning board for this.
All right, that's that. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Okay, thanks folks. Moving on to, do we have Sam yet or anybody representing Sam?
He has not joined us.
Okay, not showing up. Chris, before you drop off, and you certainly may now if you want to.
All right, bye.
Whoa, 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 before you leave.
I was joking, Chuck.
What do you, what are your, what are your thoughts on moving ahead without Sam's participation?
This is Sam who?
Casella.
Oh.
A subdivision of his farm, part of his farm.
Uh, hang on, Eric, leave it right there to, to subdivide parcels. I have reservations. This is Ryan. If this is, if you're planning on denying it, I would say let's, let's push it, push it off a month. If, if you don't have problems with it, I would say, go ahead. It doesn't matter. Obviously, if an applicant fails to show, the planning board has authority to grant or deny an application. That being said, based on the current circumstances with the COVID and the fact that this is a video conference, you know, you may want to push it off a little bit.
Okay. Ryan, I sensed you were a little comfortable with doing anything. I, I had some questions I wanted to ask Sam regarding the PDR and the.
Yeah, if there's questions, adjourn it. Adjourn it to the next meeting.
I don't have, I do have problems with it. I think that we're taking beautiful farmland and we're subdividing it. And I think that we, you know, there's just a couple of questions. I don't foresee us denying it, but certainly some questions.
What are your questions? So I can try to ask him before the next meeting.
For somebody that's, that's a leader in agriculture in our community, why is somebody subdividing this property while some of the properties are, while this property is under a purchase of development rights? I mean, and I don't want to hear answers from, from you, you know what I mean? Like I think I have.
I, I think I, I think I know why, but Eric, I don't want your explanation. The applicant, we, I think we deserve a couple of questions of, of the applicant or their representative to, to, to answer on behalf of this application, just like we do everybody. I agree with that. Obviously, an applicant is not required to attend a planning board meeting. They can submit this on papers, but if there's questions like that, Ryan, I think, give it, give him the benefit of the doubt. Let's ask that question. If he wants to submit a response in writing, that's fine. Or more better would be to show up at the next meeting and answer them in person.
Or a representative. It doesn't have to be the applicant. It could be anybody representing them and it's not Eric Cooper though. Right? I mean, it's not tough. Like we don't, we don't do that for anybody else.
No, no, I agree. I agree. I agree. And, and the questions I had, Eric, were, did we ever get a recommendation from the ag advisory committee?
We did. I just got it this morning. Hold on, pull it up here.
While you're looking for that, I do have some questions on the PDR as to how much of his property is subject to the PDR. I know the ECB had some questions about the woods. questions about the woods, making sure the woods are somehow remain intact. And they went so far as to say maybe a conservation easement should be established as part of the subdivision. So these are all things, I guess, we want to kick around, so.
I'm sorry, Chuck, if I could just interrupt. I mean, not to be rude about it, but when I read the Agricultural Advisory Board's comment, I mean, I would like to see Sam's property be protected agriculturally. And one of their comments at the bottom of their paragraph was, this may have an impact on the PR. So I would like a statement from Sam or to talk, to have a conversation with Sam or one of his representatives about, you know, how, how is this going to impact him? Positively, negatively? And it would really be great to have him or a representative here to capture the spirit of how MPRs are in our community.
Would that be more of a question for Doug? I'm not sure that Sam is the best person to answer how that might impact his application since he's really only the property owner. He's not like the applicant there. That's the town and seeing as the town has done these in, in the past.
I guess, yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at this ag referral and I think the answer here is, let's adjourn this. There's questions here. PDR related questions, there's, I mean, if this was a straightforward, you know, non-farm, two lot subdivision that somebody didn't show up on, sure, you can grant that without an applicant. But this, it seems like there's some question, there's some things to discuss. And that's what the planning board's charge is, is to discuss things with the applicants. And I think that's a good idea.
Okay, any other?
I'm sorry, Chuck, you're going to say the same thing.
Any other concerns from the board? Otherwise, we will continue the hearing until the June 24th meeting. If that's okay with everyone. I know we're going to have a couple of people out on the 24th, but I think we can, we can muddle along without Karen and Gary. But if that's okay, we will, I'll take a motion to continue it to the 24th.
I move we continue that to the 24th.
Okay, thank you, Karen. I thought we were going to be stuck in limbo. Do I have a second? Okay, I gotta, I think I have a second for somebody. Bob, thank you. All right, motion second. So we will continue this to the 24th. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Going back to the back of the agenda again. Ryan, you want to give us an update on roof drainage and the effect on the lake, the lake health? Anything else? I know you did a little bit of research and Kevin had sent an email out and I think Chris Jensen had sent an email out.
I did not get an email from Chris Jensen.
I think he said something about the MR4, MR, MS4 program and requirements. Eric, do you want to? I don't have it in front of me. If you want to dig it out and circulate. Did anybody else see that email?
Ryan, you were included on that email.
What day was that? I'm sorry, I'm looking right now.
May 29th.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. I just pulled it up.
Okay, it was, it was a response to my response to your initial research.
Oh, okay, yes.
Right, okay.
You know, I, my, my initial, I just sent, I just did a quick Google search at the end and Google Scholar and, and brought up, you know, that just roof drainage. And, you know, I, I guess I have that, the luxury of being the squeaky wheel with this stuff. But I, it's just important to me and it's been something we've, we've talked about a while. And a couple of years ago, I remember, you know, it up and come up in conversation with Kevin Olveany. And, you know, there are issues that we should consider with roof deposits. And there's, there's a lot of research. I guess I didn't do a, a, once, once Kevin Olveany emailed the board, I, I assume that the board got that email, I didn't do any further research, Chuck. So I didn't know how much we want to do. It's just something that, you know, with, with Chris's input about green infrastructure and Kevin's comments, I think if we have an opportunity to, to direct that roof drainage to some type of green infrastructure, I think if that's kind of the guidance that we've been given, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I think Kevin that said filtering through a rain garden, bio swale or other filtration approach is ideal. And I think, I don't think we've had any direct outfalls in, you know, from roof drains or anything right into the, to the lake.
Yeah, we had one, that, we had one couple of meetings ago and they turned it back. It was out on east side of the lake. I can't remember.
Sandy Beach?
Sandy Beach, Fallbrook.
Sandy Beach.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but in most cases, in most cases where they do have very little separation between pipe and lake, there's, in almost every case, there's some type of stabilization or erosion control or the turret at the end of the pipe, rip rap. Something that would slow down the velocity, something that would help. It wouldn't eliminate sediment or debris from entering over time, but it would slow it down and try to prevent it before it got into the lake. So there is some separation of pipe to lake in those instances where we have little room.
Would that qualify as green infrastructure, Lance?
No, those, those are more erosion control, sediment control devices and of pipe. Where we can provide some type of quality control, this board has through green infrastructures like those dry wells, like bioretention facilities by grain gardens. But because of their location and proximity to the lake, most cases, we're finding that those soils in those areas just don't, they don't permit those type of devices to be installed. But we've still required them in hopes that it would do something more than, than, as opposed to doing nothing.
Well, we can do one of two things. We can, we can keep this as an open item, Ryan. If you want to, if we want to keep looking at, doing research on it and discuss it at a future meeting, or we can just take it upon ourselves to make sure that future applications, we are cognizant of this issue and we, and Lance in his review, which I'm sure he does already, Chris Jensen, his review, and Kevin, when he looks at them, a- as well as ourselves, we all keep this in mind as we look at how the roof drains are handled for properties that are along the lake.
Yeah.
And, and I'm okay with that, Chuck. I mean, I can research solutions. I, I thought that my task last week was just kind of like researching, is it a thing? And, and so I think a lot of it is looking at the site, you know? And not every site we're going to be able to put a, a rain garden in. But it just, it strikes me, you know, and it, we have the opportunity in our community to do what's right for the lake quality. And come end of August, when we start seeing the green algae again, we're going to hear it again. And, you know, if, if, if the, if the power lies with our board to do what's right for quality of the lake, the brand of our community, sometimes we're going to have to hold the applicants to a, a higher standard and say, you know, I know it's going to cost you a little bit more money to, to roof, to drain your roof to the, to the west side of your property and uphill to put it in a rain garden. I know it's easier to go into the lake, but for the quality of our lake, we just might have to make these decisions. And we're going to have to, it's, it's hard. It's hard for us to do that. I don't like to make someone pay more money to do the right thing. But that's kind of our, that's kind of our board's task, I guess, you know? So it's a site by site thing, but I'll look for some solutions that might make it easier. Rain garden, that whole rain garden discussion was really, threw me off with Rocco last week. And, and I, and I thank John for the comments, but I'm sorry. I mean, those rain gardens work. They really do. And, and it's up to people to maintain their property. We don't tell people how they have to mow their lawn and how they have to trim their shrub. You know, so people have to maintain their rain gardens to their standards. If we want, if, if there's an outcry on how we don't do that, we can certainly make policy on how they should mend their soils so that that doesn't happen. I don't think that that's in our character and that's in our style.
Well, I, I think we're being proactive here. It's not like, you know, if people are coming to us and saying, hey, you're, you're letting, you're letting all this stuff go into the lake, you're not doing your job, planning board. I think if anything, we're out in front of it, which is good. But boy, the, the whole thing with stormwater treatment, I mean, for my, for my previous life, I remember that there were plans or ideas, concepts of, of having treatment plans for stormwater. And, you know, in urban areas that what runs off the streets and into our lakes and streams is sometimes more potent than sanitary sewage. And that this should be treated. And then they did cost studies and, you know, cost effectiveness of it. And it's been going back and forth. Here, we're just looking at one aspect of it, which has to do with, with the material and the roof, but it's all part of the same problem. So I think certainly there's an awareness here. And I think as long as we continue to be aware and educated as to potential issues and I, I challenge, I charge the whole board to keep an eye of this, an eye on this as we move forward with future applications that we don't overlook it. And Ryan, I think it was as well, well, well that you brought it up and we, we had this discussion and we can certainly be more aware of it as we look at subsequent application. So if there's no further discussion, if you, you know, I'm going to do some more research on it too. I think it's certainly a concern, but it's, you know, whenever we come up with something else, any other ideas, Ryan or myself or anybody else on the board, certainly bring it up at a future meeting. Okay. We had been asked, well, everybody in the town's been asked to put in considerations for the 2021 budget. Eric, I know we're, we're not quite as big as the highway department in terms of our budget, but is there anything that we should be thinking about? I know I'd asked you if there's a spreadsheet with the line items for specifically the planning board as to what responsibilities we have and if you need any help from, from me in terms of doing the projections for 2021, I'd certainly be willing to. Well, we could discuss with the board first and then, and then bring it up to you. So.
So.
What do you got?
Really, there's not a ton for the planning board's lines. Generally, it's personnel costs. So John's funding is there, your guys' is, is there. There's a contractual line, which covers the expenses for Lance and Chris Nadler. And that's really it. And then usually there's some funding in there. I think it's in the contractual line too for training. There's not a ton of other discretionary expenditures. I don't think there's any actually. So really, it just, there's some CPI adjustments, but there's not a ton there. So I'll be happy to work with you on what that funding will be for next year. But we usually just kind of carry over a lot of the lines for the most.
And, and again, in the interest of being educated, I think it would be for the board's edification as to what our budget looks like. Because I, you know, I, I've never, I've looked at it, I guess, once it, it was bundled with the entire town budget, but I've never really looked at it during the deliberation portion. So if you get a chance.
Bear with me here, I can pull it up.
Oh, my God, are we going to start looking at budgets right now in this meeting?
Dollars and cents. It's going to be a tough budget year, Ryan. So we hear, so we hear. Well, my, my plan here is that somebody make a motion to give ourselves a raise. That's what it is. Bad chance. Bad chance.
I've been trying for a pizza line for five years with this board.
If we ever get back to meeting as a group, we can include pizza. That was the, that was a consideration when we went to six o'clock meetings. Oh, my gosh, look at what we spent.
What about the electronic kind of meetings? What do we need to continue?
Good point.
Our electronics, we, you know, it's such a waste, I'm, I think, to have those big packets delivered. So one of the things to think about is maybe a budget item is what can we do? You know, is this working and do we need some more budget maybe to make it better? But that's what, that's what my concern is.
I know at one time, before we got panicked into a meeting like this, we talked about getting Google Chrome, new, Google notebooks or something for everybody. And we'd all have our own town notebook that we have, it would be, you know, just specific to town business. That didn't happen because we all got thrust into the virtual world. So we're all working with our own computers, which.
Which is good.
It's, yeah, it's not.
I got too many computers in front of me already.
Yeah.
So I think we're not looking for any expense in terms of hardware.
No, 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 it was.
But you're right, you're right, Karen. We certainly should be saving the town money and postage. And I assume that.
Okay, so.
Yep, what do you got? Christmas.
Like I said, there's one line for John, as a stenographer. You can't really see the title of the account, but it's up here.
JR.
For planning, engineering contractual. This actually usually includes Chris Nadler too. That one. So it was originally 8,500 for this year, but due to the budget adjustments from COVID, it is now down to, what is that, 2,500? So chargebacks aren't put onto this line, but anything for the board itself is. So that's why we need to be careful with how we use Lance's time. As much as we love to have him here, there's not a ton budget left.
Right.
There is another miscellaneous contractual line.
There you go. There's that postage.
So here's your CIC refreshment. So if Ryan wants to join the CIC, he'll get donuts and coffee.
Wait a minute.
They get donuts and coffee?
Out of our budget?
Not really. Part of this relates to your, your guys' budget and part of it is more general. So as you can see, obviously, the CIC is here. Postage, that's for you guys.
That is, that is only playing board postage, 1,700?
Yeah.
For mail? That essentially has gone away. Okay.
I believe so. I can't, I know the zoning board has kind of their own line. Anyways, we're training, legal notices. So postage, as you guys can tell, it's probably gone down a lot because we've done anything electronically and, I mean, will likely continue to. Dues is not going to go anywhere. That's probably the same. Board training, that was cut from the budget and everything's electronic and nobody's getting sent anywhere. Playing board attorney, I believe a lot of that was cut from the budget as well. And then legal notices, we do still get charged that, although the way, they did change it so that it doesn't cost as much. So there you go. Started with $16,000. $1,000 was cut recently. Now you have, well, then you have 6,000, but then there's another $5,000 in activity. Legal notices. All sorts of stuff. Anyways, legal services. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, so they, we're looking at this year's budget. So for next year, it'd be the same light up, line items essentially with the, you know, change in the, the allocation, I guess.
As you can likely tell, they're probably going to look for ways to reduce the budgeted expense for next year.
Sure.
Think that that's going to impact your guys' personnel costs or whatever as far as the money that you guys receive, which is extraordinary. But the postage line will probably be cut, I'm guessing, some of the other ones. They're certainly not looking to expand expenditures.
Okay. Ryan's got a contribution to the budget. It's a gypsy moth.
Very good, Chuck.
Yep. I have seen them. Are they in the trees yet or are they just starting to move that way?
I've never seen these so intense at my property than this year.
Wow.
Are crushing our oak trees, our ash trees. Every tree in my forest is being defoliated right now. Something you really should be concerned about.
Yeah.
Uh, I have had to spray all of my fruit trees, my apple trees, my blueberry bushes, all to, with a, every week, once a week. I've never seen them this bad before. So I think we should just kind of give a heads, get a heads up, everybody, that there's gonna be some outcry, I would assume.
You've got, you've got webs already in the trees?
They are.
Is there a form of the webs, moths themselves?
Yeah. So the gips, the gypsy moths, uh, they actually, um, when they, when they fly, they start off real small when they come off of their little egg sacs in the winter time. And we knew we were gonna have a big issue because we could tell the egg sacs in the forest. And they're really tiny and they started floating around like a week ago, two weeks ago. They land all over our bodies and they float on the wind. And that's how they kind of go around. And then they just start eating. They start crawling up the trees and they get larger and larger and larger. And so they're gonna start defoliating right now. They're not like cat, uh, tent caterpillars that you find out. Like, these are actually actual gypsy moths. Um, and they're just, they're, they're, they have silk, though. You will see silk because they'll start stringing down from the trees.
Right. Hanging.
You silk it there like a, a webbing, but it's not like that real intense stuff yet that I'm, that I've seen. So just a heads up, like, tell your neighbors, spread, you know, at least spray, be ready to spray your ornamentals. If you see any sign of gypsy moth, uh, spray your prized ornamentals.
We have any lantern flies up here in New York? The lantern fly, I know in Pennsylvania that they've really been.
Lantern fly, they're spotted.
Spotted lantern fly.
That's making its way up here. That's another huge issue. That's decimating vineyards. They're concerned about that, but it is, from what I heard, I thought it was down in the southern tier. It's like making its way up here. But, um, I, hopefully not on my property. I haven't seen anything up here.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the budget? So, yeah, Eric, if you, once you put together a proposed budget, uh, just send it out to us. Let, let us look at it just for more identification than necessarily any corrections or changes. Just so we're aware of the, what we have to work with. Okay?
Yeah, well.
Okay. Okay. How about the ordinance committee?
Do you want to give a sincere, the planning board member out there now?
Well, the topic of discussion this month was the off-street parking. And I think we're all in agreement that the current regulations regarding off-street parking for primarily non-residential development were very excessive in terms of what was required. And, uh, the ordinance committee is looking at a draft of an ordinance that would essentially do it, do away with any metric requirements as terms of number of spaces per thousand square foot of office and so many tables of a restaurant and all that kind of stuff, which we, we agree that they were all antiquated, what we currently have. And there's, and that's not the right way to, to calculate it. And that each application and each development was, should be specific. So we would require the applicant for a certain size development and larger to provide a parking impacts. What do we call it? Trap, it's not a traffic impact. It's, it's essentially.
Parking demand study.
Parking demand study, that's it. That they would be required to submit a parking demand study whereby they had used, uh, current parameters as to what they feel as the required number, or the number of spaces they want to provide. Uh, it would also allow for us to continue the land banking aspects of, of off-street parking and those type of developments. And so it's a, it's a much more progressive way of looking at off-street parking. And it's certainly much more environmentally friendly and we are not winding up with excessive. And then more, it's more related to the way the town is going in terms of our land uses. You know, what we're doing on, on the uptown and, uh, the, some of the other new ways we're looking at the development in the town. I think that these regulations would be very applicable to them. So, uh, there was a first draft presented at the last meeting. I guess we're gonna reconsider a second draft at the next meeting and you'll be seeing it shortly because it has to go through the, the thorough review of all the boards before there's the town board. Anything else, Eric? I should add?
No, that's pretty much it. There's.
Any questions in the board? Hopefully, I think you all agree we're going in the right direction. We looked at different types of surfaces that we're gonna allow for pavers that can support heavier vehicles, that it not be a sea of blacktop or concrete or impervious. There'd be other, uh, best practices used in terms of the surface of the parking lots to provide for infiltration and having them more pervious. So that's also a consideration. I think you'll like what we're.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna say, draft local memo there does, it gives a pretty good explanation of motives and kind of what we're intending to do and why. So hopefully we'll have, uh, one to send out to everybody at the July sixth meeting. And the reason we didn't send it out or finish up on it at the last meeting was Kathy had some comments, Tom, like, but her comments are relatively minor, so hopefully we'll come to a conclusion at this next meeting.
And I think it was based on a buffalo model, was it, Eric?
Um.
The idea of the.
There was some from buffalo taken. Um, they are kind of held up as like sort of a best practices. But theirs is also very intense. Um, and so a lot of theirs got left out because it, it's also buffalo is certainly, you know, more of an urbanized environment. They, and they, a lot of theirs had like a very, it was specifically designed for theirs. So there's some elements of theirs that was taken, but otherwise it's a more general language in the code that allows each development and their parking demand to be considered specifically to that development and not as any more prescriptive way that we do it right now, which is pretty inefficient.
It would still have standards for size of parking places, number of handicap required, aisle widths, you know, those kind of things. Because we felt that that's not something we can sort of just leave up to the whim of the applicant. Because I think if you're going, each place should, should be a certain size, but they aren't ten by twenty. They'd be more like a nine by eighteen. So they are smaller. So again, that'll all be in, what should we see in probably July sixth that we'll be discussing. Okay. Training. We had talked about, Joyce and I, we talked about maybe a in-house tutorial on the MS four program. It's probably something that the new folks on the board would appreciate in terms of what it's all about. You hear, you hear that acronym ticked around a lot, but maybe you don't know what's behind it. So we're trying to get Chris Jensen to give us a, some training on that. And it would certainly qualify under our, meaning our training requirements for board members as far as this year. There's a secret webinar that I saw an email go out on. I think that was Sarah that sent it out. I think it's, uh, it's coming up soon. And then there's Ecode. That's another thing we were thinking about, using the general code. Maybe again, for the newer board members, it'd be good to know how to maximize your use of the general code in terms of our, uh, looking for something in the code book. So we're thinking about putting something together on that. But Ecode themselves as a company has a, um, a training, a webinar. I think it's, it's, it's in the email. You'll have to, you'll have to look at us to the time and the format. And then the New York Planning Federation has a couple of training sessions also. You can do on an individual basis. Anybody else know of any train or of any interest? They'd like to be trained, educated? Okay, well, we gotta get our hours in. So, and I know Amanda, you're, you're probably thinking, oh, my gosh, it's almost half the year's over. I've got twelve hours. I gotta get in here at some point. And we'll certainly work toward, toward getting you that and then some.
I didn't think it was twelve hours.
First year.
I thought the requirement was four.
For us old timers, four. For new timers, the first years, it's twelve.
Okay. There are a lot of good online courses by New York State that I started out with. They're really good.
Yeah. I have those bookmarked. So that's, that's coming up before, um, before the next meeting here where I'll be stepping in more. But yeah, thank you.
And just make sure if, if you do, when and if you do training that you let, uh, is it Michelle know, Eric?
That's right.
Okay, Michelle's tracking the hours. So, uh, she may ask for a copy of the certificate or just a, some sort of confirmation. Not that your word is not good, but, uh, sometimes that's what we use to send out. Okay. So, uh, what do you have, anything else for the good of the group?
I do.
Yes.
I just wanted, I don't want to let the, that airport policy conversation fall too far behind us. I don't know where that's at. If you guys were bringing that up in CIC meetings or ordinance committee, I don't know if that was going someplace, Eric.
Are you talking about like kind of an airport overlay district?
No, there was a, there was a policy that was forwarded to us.
Yeah, from Mr. Mayor, Meyer.
Meyer. That was to have residents near the airport, I guess, sign like a disclosure statement, wasn't it? That I agree I'm, I'm building in a proximity of an airport and it might have noise and that kind of.
I believe I, I added that to the ordinance committee's kind of to-do list, but it hasn't been done yet.
The reason I bring it up is I was having a conversation with somebody that lives in, on Main Street in Canandaigua. And they were mentioning that the, the planes were, that were coming in over the weekend, specifically those big airplanes and how much noise they make.
Yep.
That I welcome.
That is the approach right over Main Street, right?
Yeah. And, and now it's just like, you know, we just, I just, and it's just, I don't, I want, I didn't want to make sure that we kind of protect the town in the, in the future. So I just want to just kind of keep that on the front burner as much as we can. So, thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but Medevac is now, uh, well, they're now flying patients into Thompson, right? The Thompson is now a, um, triage or a full, full-service hospital. And it used to be Medevac would take patients from here to Strong, but now patients come in by Medevac from other hospitals to Thompson for treat. So I assume the Medevac.
The last I talked, yeah, the last I talked to those guys during COVID, their business has grown exponentially by flying COVID victims. So they are probably flying more than any of my other operations.
So that just goes to add the more, more vehicles in the air.
Yeah.
More noise. So, uh, yeah, we'll keep, uh, that was certainly, uh, it's a good consideration, that whole, uh, declaration that was submitted. I think it's something that Eric has in front of the ordinance committee.
And I don't think there's anything stopping the planning board from making it a condition of approval in general. You know, the farming stuff, it's required by our code to do that, but I don't see why the planning board can't require it in the absence or, you know, while waiting for town board action to add it to the code.
Okay. Uh, next meeting, twenty-fourth, Gary and Karen will not be joining us.
Yep, I'll be gone.
Okay. So we'll be at four with Amanda. So we've got a couple of items. Cassiano, hopefully we can put that to bed.
I just want to touch on that one real quickly. Um, I did meet with the neighbor and one of the owners of Gerber on that property or on his property. And, you know, we came up with an idea of what needs to be done. And, you know, of course, the Gerber's, Gerber said, you know, it's not, it's not an issue. We'll get BME out there to kind of shoot it and create a revised plan. So I'm waiting on that. And I'll reach out to them tomorrow just to see what's going on. But, you know, of course, it doesn't sound like there's any issues. It's just a matter of waiting for that plan.
Eric, just make sure they realize when the deadline is for submitting plans for the next meeting. Well, I, I know that has to do with new applications, but don't, don't bring it in on Friday or Monday before the meeting.
I have a question about the CPN twenty-twenty-two. It says pending ZBA approval. Didn't we get a memo today? And I was reading it that they didn't need it. I'm confused with this applicant.
Nope. Good, good catch.
This, that note on here is from an older version, but they sent in, um, plans last week. And after reviewing it, they've eliminated the need for the building coverage variance and so no longer need any variance approval.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you. I'm no longer confused, Eric.
So on the FTP site, there's, there's a new plan. Uh, you're gonna do a new zoning determination, right, Eric? Or if you haven't done it already?
Yep.
Okay.
I've already done it. It looks good.
So review that information and make sure you're, you're working with the current, most current information on that application.
Right.
Okay. Uh, Taylors are going before the ZBA on the sixteenth. So depending how they make out, we'll know whether we're, we're talking to them on the twenty-fourth. And Stephen Day, and I would just ask that the board look at that application very carefully. There's, there's some waivers that they're asking relief from regarding the driveways and slopes and all that. And just make sure you're aware of those, uh, those exceptions and you're comfortable with them. So we'll talk to Mr. Day on the twenty-fourth. Anything else?
He already started that. Is that one that's already kind of in progress? You know?
What do you mean by already started? Like developing on the site?
Yeah. I don't know what the address is. I, I know somewhere on, um, well, it's kind of road sixteen, but I call it West Lake Road, uh, somebody has, has started a huge driveway expansion. And I don't know if that's, that was them. Cause I, I've drove, drove by it and I was saying, geez, I don't ever remember seeing that.
He's, he's down at the bottom of Dul. He's a little offset from Dul, but.
And that's not the one I'm talking about then.
Okay.
There's another one that's kind of down by Yacht Club. It's two houses. And they're just, I mean, the, the whole front yard is, looks like a driveway now.
Oh, I, I know where you're talking about. Um, they are actually not in the RLD. And so when they came in for a development permit, they didn't need planning board approval.
Oh, okay. All right. I was wondering, because that was, uh, I, I don't know. It, it doesn't look good for me, from my perspective, but it's all right.
And it's not more than the thousand square feet, Eric?
It doesn't apply outside the ROD.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
It, it looks like it's more. That's what I was curious, but, okay.
All righty. Uh, anything else, Eric, that we should be looking at on our radar coming up? I guess, uh, a lot of the applications are old in terms of.
There is one more that will be on your agenda for the twenty-fourth pending, and I'll send this out tomorrow. It's pending the town board, but generally they just kick these to you guys anyways. It's an MUO referral. It's similar to the one that you guys saw before on Brickyard and Thomas Road. Rocco has kind of decided to start with the property that goes around the, uh, school district's building there. So the development kind of starts near the corner of Sommers and Airport Road. It would be an MUO rezoning, sixty-seven houses, I think, as I recall. And so I'll send that out tomorrow. And of course, at this point in the process, they're just looking for a recommendation and I'll kind of send out. and I'll kind of send out, uh, guidelines as far as what they're looking for, too. For Gary and Karen, since you guys aren't gonna be here, if you guys want to submit comments beforehand, that's fine.
Okay.
One of the things I did notice about that application I asked about was I couldn't tell the old house on their plan. You know, I was looking at the PDF that you sent, maybe it isn't the most recent one, but there should be like, I should be able to know what the old noncompl, the old non-conforming was so that I can figure out, you know, what the new thing is, and I couldn't.
Yeah, on the old set of plans or the previous version, they had the existing condition survey as part of the packet, so you could see that on one of the sheets, but this one, they pulled it up.
Getting back to the other one, uh, of Rocco's, is, is it in any way tied into his Brickyard and Thomas scheme?
Yeah, there's a, it shows essentially like a stub road over to that other parcel that they previously showed.
Right, that it was gonna be a future development, but the future development's gonna come before the primary development? Is that what we're, or are you just trying to get the whole thing? He's trying to get it all M U O?
The one that they're doing right now, A, he got a good price on it from the person who's selling it and B, um, I think that there's better access to sewer on that side. So that's probably leading them to do that one first.
Okay. Same housing type?
Yeah, and they include a small architectural rendering of it. Again, I'll, I'll send that stuff out and if you guys have any comments on it, um, let me know.
Okay, uh, yeah, just for future meetings, any bond releases, credit, credit releases, extensions? If we can, the sooner we get those, the better. Uh, well, the credit releases are, they're pretty cut and dry, I mean, but I guess as far as the extensions, there sometimes might be questions on the extension and what it's all about and that kind of stuff and it kind of, it's nice to have a little bit of time to think about it, so, does.
We know, it tried to.
Does Michelle track all, uh, she keep a timeline or timesheet, a timeline as to, what's, what's due when in terms of expiration and all that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So she should know what's coming up for.
Yes.
Expiration.
Usually let people know a month in advance that it's, you know, expiring, wouldn't it?
All righty. Anybody else have anything? All right, good meeting, uh, we learned a lot, I think, so, and that's what we're all here for.
And we gave, spent a lot of time to get here. We, it's seven twenty-one, you know what I mean, like, we waited around a long time. I'll take a moment during this meeting at seven twenty-one PM, Chuck.
Okay, uh, I'll take a second.
I'll say it.
Okay, Gary, Karen, we'll miss you at the next meeting, we'll see you in July.
Yes, you will.
Okay, night all.
Good night, everyone.
You guys.
Thanks, Eric, thanks, John.
Take care.